And Councilmember Clay will not be here this evening. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Sniffer?
Here.
And Councilmember Clay will not be here this evening. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Sniffer?
This weekend, I was really closer than usual. I was delighted to attend a housing forum. And the most, to me, the most notable part of attending that was the constant and favorable references to Tacoma Park's rent stabilization, not just by Mark L. Rich, or Jerry Siemens, or myself, but...
Where was this?
Set at Piney Branch Middle School. Put on by the Southern Christian Leadership Council and several other...
It's our House Residents Association.
That's right, thank you. Anyway, it was a reminder of, to me, of the kind of rather nice situation we have in Tacoma Park. We've had rent stabilization for pretty close to, we're moving on to 30 years here. And we don't have slums in Tacoma Park and all the other stuff that critics said we would have. Instead, we have several thousand, I think it's 3,000, affordable units and a community that supports that, both homeowners and renters. And it's kind of a source of pride. And glad to see that got a little recognition for it.
Barry?
Yes, just would like to remind all of you and my colleagues that Wednesday night at 7:30 is the lecture by the economist and writer Lester Brown, who will be talking about his newest book, Plan B 3.0: Mobilizing to Save Civilization. Rather modest goal there for a book, but I can tell you by after reading it, it's a sensational work. And not only is it kind of frightening, à la a Stephen King novel, but he, you know, is very practical and also very optimistic. And I think that that certainly made me a believer in his work. And he's, he comes up with a number of very practical solutions for communities, for individuals to take, for political bodies such as ourselves, the state, federal government, and most importantly, international action, which is also needed to solve the many problems that we have related to global warming and unstable states and situation with food prices going through the roof and causing food riots around the world. It is a very challenging time, for sure. And I think that we can, we can expect that Mr. Brown will bring a very learned perspective to this. And most importantly, he has some very practical suggestions that will make us, I think, more hopeful than we might otherwise be. So I invite you all to come. That is 7:30. There's, this will be a fundraiser for the Tacoma Crossroads Farmers Market, which is getting underway again in early June. And it will be at the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church on Tulip Avenue. The donation for the lecture and the reception, which begins at 6:30, is $50 for adults, $25 for students, the lecture only, $20 for adults, $10 for students. I hope you all can make it. Thank you.
And the following Monday, in this room, will be a meeting for all of Ward 3. And we will cover ideas on Tacoma Junction, as well as take a look at the budget and also at patrols. So I hope everybody in Ward 3 or anywhere else in the city can come and participate in that. Thanks.
Two comments, one in terms of announcements. On Sunday, the 20th, there'll be a fabulous Earth Day event at the Junction, the annual co-op, Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-ops event will be there. And I encourage people to come out, enjoy the food and fun activities, both for kids and adults, and also see the new businesses that are open in the Junction, the Pajama Squid in particular, a store that has a variety of toys and interesting things. And then the second thing is, I just want to comment on the EcoPark Development Site. And I called them today and haven't gotten a call back. It's my second call to them. And so I will be pow-wowing the city manager to figure out if there's a way we can put a little more pressure on them to clean up that site until development does happen there. For anyone who suggests Tacoma Park is not interested in development, should look at that example. We, every constituent I talked to keeps asking me, when are they going to develop the site? When are we going to have that, that site developed? When are we going to have more housing units there and retail there? So we, in many cases, want good development in our community. And I look forward to talking with the city manager in ways we can figure out a way to pressure the developer, whether it's through us or for DC to get that site cleaned up because it's sort of an entryway into our old town area from the metro and it's despicable right now.
I've just got a couple of quick ones. I was at the Taste of Tacoma event yesterday at the Hospital College Campus. And the, as usual, the weather was cooler and therefore maybe the attendance was a little lower than everybody would have hoped. But that's always a nice event. And that's put on by the Columbia Union College students. And I think they can't make it later in the year because their graduation is in about two weeks. So they have to do the event before they're all gone for the summer. But they should be back next year doing that as well. Then, coming up, April 26th, it's the Azalea Awards for the Tacoma Foundation here in this room. That's on Saturday night at, I believe, 6 o'clock. And I see the President of Historic Tacoma here. I don't want to steal your thunder. Should I mention your upcoming event, or are you going to do that?
I'm ready.
Okay, then I won't, then I won't talk about that one. And...
Is it on the 26th?
Yes. Yes. Those of us who are going to the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department Annual Bank, we had two events that evening. And I think I had three events that evening. And I'll make them all. And I also wanted to note that there's been a fair amount of back and forth, I believe, in the Saskatoon neighborhood about the gypsy moth spraying and the fact that a couple of people have opted out of the spraying and that that has taken some blocks below the threshold for the spraying. And their neighbors are unhappy that the spraying won't happen in those blocks and are looking for any way possible to get the people who opted out to opt back in, for the county to possibly do it instead of the state because it's a, depending on the area, some are being sprayed by the county and some by the state. My understanding of the process is that once people opt out, they opt out permanently and the only way that it changes so that now or in the future, that kind of that opt-out comes off is if they either sell the house or they then send something back in signed saying that they have removed their objection. So I've asked the city manager and the public courts director and the arbors to see if there's anything that can be done to try and get the, get those blocks back on the gypsy moth spraying because the spray itself is VT, which is not harmful. And if we, we need to do anything possible to help save the trees because the tree canopy in the city, as we heard a couple of weeks ago from the arbors, is declining and we need to do everything to try and maintain it. So people in that neighborhood are actively trying to get the spraying back. And I don't know if that's come up in any other neighborhoods in the city that have the spraying, but that one will be out next week. Okay. We don't have anything for the record. I could just provide a brief agenda scheduling update. Just wanted to point out that we have, next Monday, we now have a discussion of a draft resolution urging the FTA not to approve the sale of land at Tacoma Metro Station. And we have a discussion of a draft resolution concerning Tacoma Metro Development. The following Monday, the 28th, we have a lot of similar items. We're going to be possibly interviewing folks for the Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. We're going to have a presentation on the Tacoma Park Elementary School Proposed Edition. If we have a resolution concerning the Tacoma Metro Development. And we will also have a discussion of preliminary comments on the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan. So all of those are about potential development issues in the city. And then, as we get into May, we start into the intense part of our budget discussions. And we have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, May 5th, on the constant yield rate and the budget. And then throughout May, we have the potential for Thursday budget work sessions. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. If anybody has any comments to make, if you can, please try and keep your comments to three minutes and identify yourselves when you come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Barron. I'm the President of Historic Tacoma. Thanks, Bruce, for bringing up our house and garden tour, which is coming up Sunday, May the 4th. This will be the 35th year that this tour has been held on the first Sunday in May. Some of you may know the tour was put together in the 1970s by concerned citizens who wanted to show that there was value to protecting and preserving the fabulous housing stock architectural heritage of Tacoma Park, DC, and Maryland. And boy, were they right. I was actually just working on the tour brochure this weekend. We've got some fabulous, fabulous houses this year. Our theme is "First Stop Tacoma" and it highlights the transit heritage of the community as well as the architectural heritage. Tickets on sale for $15 in advance at American Craft, Mark's Kitchen Now and Then, the Co-op and the Culture Shop, $20 the day of the tour. We'll be selling tickets the day of the tour in front of the Tacoma Park Public Library in the DC neighborhood at the corner of Fifth and Cedar. So hopefully, we'll see lots of folks here and lots of folks watching at home come out and enjoy the tour on May the 4th, the first Sunday in May. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kaye Daniels-Cohen, Acting President of SS Carroll. And due to the tiniest little communication glitch, we sent a letter and somehow, I think it got passed out to the city council, but maybe not to everyone else. So I'm going on record tonight and I'm going to speak the letter. So it is, it is a done deal. It says, "Dear Mayor Williams of Tacoma Park City Council, this letter is to inform the mayor, city council, and city of Tacoma Park that the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, Hereafter SS Carroll, formed a subcommittee in early December of 2007 to develop a vision for the revitalization of the Tacoma Junction, Hereafter Junction. And it is our hope that the correspondence updates Mayor Williams, the city council, and city administrator of the goals of SS Carroll, which represents 400-plus homes surrounding the junction area. The overall vision for the junction is a pedestrian-friendly area that extends from the Tacoma Park Fire Department down Carroll Avenue to Lee Avenue, including the Co-op and the VJ Morrison Park. In that geographical area, our revitalization recommendations are as follows: attractive development of city-owned lot, facelifts on existing structures, pedestrian-friendly walkways, and ease of parking. SS Carroll is seeking to make the junction a local and non-local destination and ensure financial support from the community for the long term." I know you all have got it in front of you. I'm just going to slip down to the bottom of it. SS Carroll, representing 400-plus homes that are directly impacted by the junction areas, very interested in working, working with the city as they move forward to ensure that the vision and needs of the local neighborhood residents are taken into consideration. SS Carroll would formally like to request the city to initiate a comprehensive traffic study considering alternatives to the roundabout layout with pedestrians, safety, and revitalization of existing and future junction businesses as priorities. Update the 1996 revitalization junction study in order to make its findings, facts, figures, and recommendation applicable to the 2008 junction characteristics. Provide a plan that would detail the process in which SS Carroll can work together on the junction's long-term goals: revitalization, pedestrian safety, traffic flow, municipal and infrastructure upgrades. Provide a plan that would detail the process in which SS Carroll can work together on the junction's short-term concerns, such as construction of, on the firehouse and the WSSC piping projects. In conclusion, the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association members want to work with the mayor, city council, and city of Tacoma Park to make the junction live up to its historical true potential now and in the near future. And this is, I think, probably the first, the meeting that Dan, just a tiny little correction, that's going to be Wednesday, April the 23rd, and probably in the Azalea Room. And if we have enough people, it's a Ward 3 meeting. If we have enough people, we may have to, hopefully, move over here. But that will, the first order of business will be a presentation that SS Carroll made to its association on, about two weeks ago. Also, your city clerk has got some signatures. I didn't have a chance to copy them, so she's got them. There were signatures of the people who were at the meeting. She's going to copy them for you all so that you can see that there's definitely some interest. There was more interest than just that. There was people who couldn't make the meeting and they'd be able to make this one, though. So, I thank you for your time. And the mayor forgot to mention that, isn't something about breakfast on Saturday, or did you, did you cancel that in lieu of digging? Don't you have breakfast on Saturday the 19th?
I do.
Right, at New Hampshire Avenue?
Yes.
Cool. The doughnut place, right? Dunkin' Donuts. Be therapy square.
10:30 to 12:30.
Thank you, sir. And then people can come and help clean up the junction and Old Tacoma, right after that, or earlier.
They'll, they'll be on their sugar high and then they can go work.
Go out and go to work, right. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Next item is city managers' comments.
Just had one brief item this evening. I think, as the council recalls, in 2007, the city adopted its own local living wage law. As part of that process, we do review the living wage rate. That's reviewed on an annual basis and it is tied to Montgomery County's adopted rate. I did want to share with the council that effective July 1st, 2008, the city's living wage rate will go from $11.95 per hour to $12.40 per hour. In accordance with the ordinance that was adopted by the council, we will be publishing the new rate, both in English and Spanish, on the city's website. And we will also be placing that in the city newsletter. And that's it, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. And the next item is your presentation of the proposed budget.
I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. If I could ask the council to kind of step down to the chairs. community sort of an overview of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2009. I think everyone's aware the city's fiscal year starts on July 1st. And in accordance with the city charter, I'm responsible for submitting a proposed budget to the city council. For the council tonight, kind of marks the beginning of your deliberations relative to the budget. And I would note, from my perspective, this is probably the most important action that the council takes each year. I think sometimes it's very easy to look at budgets as being nothing more than a bunch of numbers. But when you boil that all down, what this really represents is the council's service priorities for the community. I wanted to start off by just sort of sharing with the council and with the community, I guess, what I took into consideration in putting together the proposed budget for this evening. And first, and I think probably certainly one of the most important things, is the maintenance of adequate financial reserves. And there's really two reasons for that. One is basically to make sure that as the city's cash flow requirements sort of ebb and flow throughout the year, that we have adequate reserves to see us through. I think everyone is probably painfully aware that we are very property tax dependent in terms of revenues. Those revenues tend to come in largely in November, December, and January. But obviously, there's a lot of capital projects in particular that go on during the summer. So we do need adequate reserves just to manage our cash flow requirements. And certainly, particularly right now, I think everyone's very aware that economic times are somewhat uncertain. The city's not immune to that, just as other private industries are dealing with that now, and certainly a lot of our fellow localities. And so you do want to maintain adequate financial reserves just to see you through in the future in case circumstances change and you actually have adequate time to adjust without a disruption in service. A second priority was to basically ensure that we were maintaining city infrastructure such as streets, our stormwater system, and our vehicle fleet. I think far too often, I think we all hear about local governments that as they hit tough financial times, basically don't take care of their capital. While in the short run, that is a good solution to get you through a tough financial crisis. All it does is really delay the problem and actually, from my experience, compound it. A very important principle to me is that we only use any reserve funds to finance non-recurring initiatives or capital projects. Your fund balance, besides what you try to maintain, basically can build up over the years because your revenues came in higher or your expenditures came in lower than budget. Those are obviously one-time occurrences. You can't count on that in the future. And from my perspective, it's fiscally imprudent to basically try to dig into your reserves to fund ongoing operational expenditures because you're setting yourself up potentially for a fall in the future. And then last and certainly not least, I think this budget was predicated on continuing the high level of city services that our residents have come to expect. And I would put the emphasis on continuation. This was not an expansion budget. I think there are certainly some areas that we tried to make some headway in addressing some of the council's priorities. But as I continue going through this presentation and the council gets really into the heart of its deliberations in May, I think what you'll see is this is not an expansionist budget and it's somewhat status quo. Kind of the boring accounting part, I think, of the budget in tonight's presentation is just to talk a little bit about how the budget is actually structured. Local government budgets are basically categorized into funds. Those are essential fiscal entities that we use to account for different types of expenditures. The FY09 budget basically includes four funds. Those would be the general fund, the stormwater management fund, the special revenue funds, and the community center fund. And I'll touch just very briefly on each of those. Starting sort of at a more global perspective, the FY09 proposed budget includes total revenues of just over $22 million, total expenditures of just under $26 million. And you don't have to be a math genius to realize that there's a difference between those two numbers. The variance is basically made up of a couple of things. One is the equipment replacement reserve. I think the council's aware of this, but for the benefit of the community, the equipment replacement reserve is a designated fund where we set aside monies for the future replacement of capital items, particularly our vehicle fleet, some of the equipment in our buildings. And we try to set aside money each year so that when those items come up for replacement, there are sufficient funds in the equipment replacement reserve for us to draw out of that. So that is basically a conscious decision where the city sets monies aside knowing that... that it will draw from those funds at some point in the future. I'll talk about this a little bit more, but the budget does contemplate, um, bonding, specifically for the public works facility, and then the remainder of the difference between total revenues and expenditures is drawing out fund balance, as I mentioned, for some capital projects that are one-time in nature, as well as some non-recurring initiatives. The general fund is really sort of the workforce of the city's budget. It accounts for the majority of city's spending, in fact, about ninety percent of that in FY2009. And this is probably the part of the budget that, uh, most of our residents think about when you think of city services. It's going to be where the cost of police protection are captured, street, um, street plowing during snow, um, our recreation services, our library services. So it's kind of the traditional functions of government are accounted for in the general fund. We also account for our principal and interest payments or debt service on some of the outstanding obligations that the city has. For example, we have, um, we took out a, a loan or a bond several years ago to, um, expedite some very necessary street improvements, and we also have some outstanding general obligation bonds for the community center project. Unlike many cities, we do actually account for our capital outlay in the general fund. You'll sometimes see some local governments who actually have a, a separate fund or entity to account for capital in Tacoma Park. It is captured in the general fund, which is why from year to year, you'll see some fairly significant swings in expenditures. Just kind of a brief overview of the general fund. We have revenues of about nineteen and a half million dollars, expenditures of just about twenty-three million. Um, the FY09 proposed budget does contemplate the use of fund balance, specifically one point three five million dollars. Um, a good chunk of that, forty-five percent, is actually money being drawn out of the equipment replacement reserve for items that have come up on the schedule for replacement. The balance of the, of the, um, one point three five million dollars is basically the required city match for grant projects and certainly non-recurring expenditures that I'll touch on momentarily. The stormwater management fund, just as the name would imply, this is where we account for any kind of revenue and expenditure activity related to stormwater management. Unlike some municipalities in the metropolitan area, we are responsible for stormwater management within the corporate boundaries of the city. We do have a base rate which is predicated on, um, essentially a single-family residential lot. Um, other parcels in the city basically pay a rate that's an equivalent of that, basically on the impervious surface. Um, about two years ago, I believe it was, the council established a new base rate of forty-eight dollars, uh, which is the amount that's typically paid by single-family homeowners, and the proposed budget does not, uh, envision any change in that rate. Uh, total expenditures in the stormwater management fund for '09 are just under three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, which is very equivalent to what they are for the current year. Uh, the special revenue funds is how we account for grant-funded projects. I think the, um, the city has historically, basically very aggressively pursued grant funding, um, and that has enabled us to do a whole variety of projects that we otherwise would not be able to do, uh, within our funding limitations. Um, expenditures in fiscal '09 are just going to be just under nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and there is a, a whole slew of projects that are going to be grant-funded in the next fiscal year, so I'll just comment on a few. One is a continuation of the SeaSafe program, um, in the Crossroads area. Um, we have just gotten our second year of funding, as the council may recall, for the Safe Routes to School Initiative. In fiscal '09, there'll be a continuation of some of the educational efforts, um, that have gotten started in the current fiscal year, and there will also be an infrastructure project, specifically kind of a sidewalk analysis, so we can identify whether there are gaps in the city's sidewalks, um, as children and other pedestrians are walking in school areas. We have been very successful in getting funding for the, for the New Hampshire Avenue corridor enhancement, which has been a priority of the council for the last few years. Uh, this year, we were fortunate enough to get additional funding through the Community Legacy Program. The community center fund was established in fiscal year 2003, um, basically for the construction and renovation of this building. I would note that there were certain expenditures related to the community center, um, that were actually incurred prior to the establishment of the community center fund, and those were basically, at that time, accounted for in special revenue. Uh, we basically capture any cost related to construction and associated costs such as architectural fees, um, other type of technical consultants we have used related to the community center fund. In fiscal year '09, we are anticipating expenditures of one point two million dollars. All of that amount, um, is geared towards the renovation of the room that we are standing in this evening. Council has had numerous work sessions on this, but our goal, for those who are maybe watching and haven't tracked this project, is to keep this space usable for official city proceedings, but also expand its flexibility so it can be used as an arts venue. Uh, the entire amount of this project is anticipated to be financed with either grants from either the federal or state levels of government, and an expected donation from Washington Adventist Hospital in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just wanted to very briefly touch on some issues that I felt were fairly critical in either putting together the budget or, truthfully, to put on the council's radar screen, um, as you consider the budget. I think we've all read in the newspapers about a number of our surrounding jurisdictions, um, who have been really hard-hit by foreclosures, um, following housing prices. In looking at the data from the state, um, truthfully, we're not seeing that in Tacoma Park, at least not yet, and property values in the city continue to be very strong. The assessable real property base net is actually increasing from last year by almost a hundred and sixty-five million dollars, and that's an increase of just over eleven percent from last year. Uh, this question comes up a lot in terms of, um, how do these increases in assessment actually impact individual homeowners? As the council, I think, is aware, there is the state homestead property tax credit, which does not actually alter the assessment itself, but it does limit the increase in taxable assessments to ten percent for qualifying property owners. Um, obviously, when properties change hands and the, you know, the pro, new property owner will basically see the full impact of assessments, um, that the prior property owner did not have to experience. The proposed budget basically assumes a continued tax rate of sixty-one cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Um, in about a month, we will also be having a constant yield tax rate hearing, and I did want to flag tonight that the proposed rate does exceed the constant yield tax rate of point five four nine. As I mentioned earlier, we are very property tax dependent. I think one of the things that struck me coming from a different part of the country to Tacoma Park is the limited options that municipalities actually have to raise revenues. Um, so I think that's just a fact of life for any local government in Maryland, and I think certainly a community like Tacoma Park, which is primarily residential, particularly feels the impact of property taxes. I think the council has made a conscious effort to try to address that in recent years by reducing the rate, and I believe when I first started here, I think the rate was actually sixty-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, so we have dropped it several times. In FY09, property tax revenues will account for fifty-one percent of general fund revenues. The proposed budget also assumes a continuation of the city's supplement to the state homeowner property tax credit program. Uh, for those who may not be familiar with that, it's a program geared towards low and moderate income homeowners. As the state does provide a credit, uh, you do have to apply for it. Um, this council has made a number of, uh, increases in the amount of the city's supplement, and it's, it's gone from anywhere from thirty percent to its present rate of fifty percent of the state property tax credit amount. I think in, um, the current fiscal year, we have about a hundred and sixty-five, um, homeowners who are benefiting from the city supplement. Um, tax duplication has been another issue that certainly has been discussed, um, at great length in the community, and there are currently two members of the council who actually served on the, um, the TASTI group, which was a citizens group appointed by the city council to actually review this issue. With the city council's, um, lobbying efforts, the now county executive did appoint a joint revenue-sharing task force, which basically consists of equal representation from both the county staff and, and the municipal staffs. I am a member of that. Um, our work got underway in May of 2007, and that work is ongoing. Um, we had a meeting last week. I do anticipate that there will be a formal request from the task force, um, asking the county executive to give us about ninety more days to, to wrap up our work. In two, in 2009, uh, tax duplication does constitute the second-largest source of operating revenues for the city, uh, following property taxes, and actually accounts for about fifteen percent of general fund revenues. From a monetary standpoint, what we expect to get from the county in tax duplication payments for '09 is about three million dollars. That is the same amount as fiscal year 2008. Um, and I probably would note, and I think for, some of the council members may recall this, the amount has actually been the same now for 2007, 2008, and we're projecting for 2009. Uh, we went through kind of a last-minute battle last year, um, where the county executive had proposed keeping the amount the same, and there was a suggestion by some county council members, um, to actually invoke the formulas. Um, we, there was a hearing, um, at the county earlier today, which Deputy City Manager Suzanne Ledlow attended, and, um, it appears that the county council, at least the MFP committee, is prepared to support the county executive's recommendation to hold the municipalities harmless while the task force is continuing its work. We are a service industry, and as such, uh, basically, a lot of our budget goes to staffing and personnel cost, and I think we talked a little bit about this last year. Um, as your city manager, I, I don't recommend, um, adding staff very lightly. Those are costs that continue to grow and compound over the years, so I certainly think it's something we need to be judicious about. The proposed budget actually reflects a decrease of point six-three FTEs. That basically represents sort of a, uh, tightening our pencils, or whatever phrase you'd like to use. Um, basically, in terms of some part-time staffing, it does not represent, um, doing away with any positions, just reducing certain hours in certain part-time functions. Back around, uh, 2000, the city council did adopt a, a salary compensation plan that basically ties the market adjustment rate for city employees to the Department of Labor Employment Cost Index. Um, we look at that every December, and that basically becomes a market adjustment rate, and for 2009, that market adjustment rate would be three point five percent. Like other jurisdictions, we are struggling, um, have struggled, continue to struggle with employee health insurance and what is happening in that market. Uh, we do not have final rates, so we do have to make certain assumptions in putting together the proposed budget for the council. Uh, based on our conversations with our broker, we are anticipating that employee health insurance costs will go up by about fourteen percent. Some other comments just about staffing and personnel cost. Um, earlier this year, uh, in the latter part of last year, the council did approve the hiring of consultants to basically help the ci, city staff, uh, to do our HR function, with reviewing, um, just employee compensation, basically doing some salary surveying of other jurisdictions in the area, and also reviewing the city's position classification system, which is basically the, the process and the methodology by which positions get placed in certain pay grades. Um, that review is still ongoing, um, as of the time I submitted my budget to the council. So we can't really predict what type of implementation costs might be associated with that, and certainly that ultimately becomes a matter of discretion on the part of the city council in terms of how any recommendations from the consultants get implemented. Um, rather than load up the budget, quite frankly, um, and making a, a wild guess in terms of what that implementation plan may cost, my budget does assume that any implementation costs will be allocated for the unappropriated reserve. Couple other personnel issues that I felt were very important to, to cover this evening, um, and one has to do with the police employee's retirement plan. Uh, this was a plan that was basically, um, implemented by the city in approximately 2001. Prior to that time, our sworn police officers were actually, um, participating in the state plan. And while I was not here at the time, my understanding, it was an attempt to basically provide the officers, uh, with an earlier retirement date. It had been thirty years, and they now have a twenty-five-year service for retirement. The plan provisions do include retirement benefits, disability benefits, and death benefits, and the amount that is contributed each year is determined by an actuarial study that is done on an annual basis. One of the things since the plan's inception, um, is that we have had a much higher-than-expected rate of disability awards, um, in the police pension plan. This has been a matter that has been discussed at great length within the past, um, probably twelve months by the pension board, um, and I did want to share with the council that the board recently voted on a proposed plan amendment to try to deal with the higher-than-expected rate of disability, and that will be forthcoming to the council. Um, the reason it has not been presented to you yet is that we do, I am obligated to basically discuss this matter, um, with Local 400, which is a bargaining unit that represents sworn police officers or some of them. If the council does not choose to implement that plan amendment, um, you will see an actuarial recommendation or requirement to increase the contribution rate to the plan by more than twenty-five percent. It would basically go from the present twenty-nine point one-two percent to about thirty-seven I just mentioned the required contribution rate for fiscal '09 is twenty-nine point one-three percent. In my discussions with the actuaries, because of a couple factors, certainly the, the rate of disabilities that we have seen, the fact that the, the stock market, um, and rates of return are less than, was envisioned at the time the plan was created. Um, they have encouraged me to basically include in my proposed budget something beyond the actuarially required rate, and that we continue to try to do that on an ongoing basis. The budget that has been submitted to the council includes a contribution rate of thirty-one Another big area of the budget is city facilities. As I touched on very early on in this presentation, the '09 budget does assume that we will move forward with the renovation of the public works facility. We have included in the draft budget, uh, design cost in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, those would be assumed to be paid for out of general operating revenues. Because we do not yet have a design, uh, truthfully, the construction estimate is very preliminary. Uh, for the purposes of submitting the budget to the council, we have assumed a figure of two million dollars, and my assumption is that that amount will be bond-financed. Um, in talking to the state local government infrastructure program, um, and kind of getting a sense of what their timing will be in the next year, what I have assumed is that any debt service associated with financing the public works facility, um, would basically hit the budget in fiscal year 2010. As we talked about earlier, the community center fund doesn't contemplate the renovation of the council chamber's auditorium at a cost of one point two million dollars. The other infrastructure issue that I think is important to touch on has to do with bridges. I think everyone's aware, we have two bridges within the corporate boundaries of Tacoma Park. Those, um, are legally the city's, and we are financially responsible for them. Through the road maintenance tax duplication formula, there is a minimal amount of funding, and by minimal, um, I think it's ranged anywhere from seventeen dollars per bridge to a couple thousand dollars per bridge, um, that has flowed through to the city through tax duplication, and it's basically envisioned to do very, very minimal maintenance. Um, there is biannual inspections of bridges, um, in Maryland, and basically both the city's bridges have been inspected fairly recently, and those reports indicate that at some point in the near future, both of the city bridges should probably be repaired or replaced. Um, this has been an issue that I have raised as a member of the revenue-sharing task force. Uh, the deputy city manager has had discussions with, um, Councilmember Urban Staff, and Mayor Williams has also sent a letter to the county executive about this. What we are hoping and, and think would be appropriate would be for the county to actually include Tacoma Park's bridges, um, in the county CIP, and for those bridges that basically would be eligible for federal funding, that the county would pick up the required local match of twenty percent. Um, at this point, there has been no resolution of those issues. Um, Ms. Ledlow is continuing to have her discussions with Councilmember Urban Staff, um, so this is something, obviously, we'll continue to keep the council apprised of. The equipment replacement reserve, as I mentioned, um, is where we set aside money, uh, for the future replacement of, uh, city vehicles, dump trucks, uh, boilers in, in city facilities. Um, as part of my preparing this budget, I went back and basically looked at the history of the equipment replacement reserve for the last fifteen years. And I would say, in talking to the staff about that, it has probably been inadequately funded over those years. I noted about four years in a row, actually, where there was no contribution made to it. Um, as part of our staff work this fiscal year, uh, both the Director of Finance and the Director of Public Works spent considerable time working with the city department, reviewing what items were reflected in the then-present equipment replacement reserve list, reviewing the city's fixed assets, and making sure that we had a good accounting of everything that we should be, um, looking towards replacement in the future years and how we were going to fund that. They did a great job on it, but I have to admit, when they gave me the bottom line of what we should be contributing every year to the equipment replacement reserve, it had a pretty hefty price tag, um, and that was over one million dollars a year. Uh, part of that's just a function of adding new items to the equipment replacement reserve, and part of it was probably kind of make-up funding from what had happened in prior years. The recommended contribution for FY09 is five hundred thousand dollars. That's a continuation of the current amount. Um, from my perspective, while it's not ideal, I do think there needs to be a balance between what we are doing relative to the future replacement of capital, um, other city priorities, and also certainly our, the concerns of our residents about tax rates. Just a few other budget highlights before I close, that I just wanted to share with the council. Um, there is funding in the proposed budget for a community-wide strategic planning process. As I've listened to the council- As I've listened to the council talk during the various priority sessions, the one thing that came through very clear is how important it was to you all as a council to have input from the community. So there is funding for that. It's approximately $60,000, which was a figure that I developed talking to the National Civic League that some of you may be familiar with. I'm personally familiar with their work, and they do a great job of basically sparking citizen engagement in these type of policy discussions. We also have funding, $30,000, to create a green roof over the police parking area. This is probably the area that most of you think of as having the pea gravel on it. So there's $30,000 for that. The council has previously talked about implementing the use of speed cameras in the city to try to slow traffic down. The budget contemplates two fixed camera locations, which is what the council had previously talked about and seemed to be supportive of. There is $55,000 in both revenues and expenditures associated with the implementation of the speed camera program. And for budgetary purposes, we have assumed that basically the program would break even. The other major issue that's in the budget includes the Washington Adventist site. I think we're all aware that Washington Adventist is moving forward with their plans to relocate from Tacoma Park, and this council took a very important step in terms of creating a land use committee to help guide you in that process. In discussions with the planning staff, we all did think it would be very helpful to have some type of design charrette process to ensure that we're getting the maximum amount of community input, as that will probably be one of the largest redevelopments in the city's history. And there is $100,000 in the budget for a design charrette for that property. Kind of next steps for both the council's benefit and for the community, there will be two public hearings that take place on May 5th. One is to get the public's input on my proposed budget for fiscal year 2009 before the council actually begins their deliberations. As required by state law, since the proposed budget does contemplate a tax rate higher than the constant yield, that also needs to be the subject of a public hearing. The bulk of the council's work, obviously, will take place during the month of May through a series of council work sessions, and the mayor and I will soon be kind of working out the schedule for those. What I would ask the council in the interim is if there are specific areas that you have interest about relative to any specific departmental budget that you would like us to cover during those work sessions. If you could just shoot me an email and share that with me, that would be very helpful as I work with the staff in preparing materials for the future work sessions. The last thing I guess I'd like to just say in closing is, this is a tremendous effort to put together a budget. It's certainly not something that I do by myself, and it's probably one of the things that we do each year that literally touches each and every department in the city. And I think I would be remiss if I publicly did not thank all the members of the management team for their assistance, and two individuals in particular who have just been of a measurable help to me would be Director of Finance Yvonne DeBrugge and Executive Assistant Peggy Washington. So with that, I thank you for your time and look forward to having the opportunity to work with the council in developing the final budget for the community.
Yes, welcome to the sweatbox.
Yeah, do you think you could turn that up a little?
It's all computer-controlled, right?
Could you unplug it?
Disconnect the gas line.
All right, let's just get this over with.
Thank you very much for the presentation of the budget. That was very helpful, understanding the overall parameters that we'll be operating under. And as the city manager said, we will have a number of public hearings, a couple at the beginning. There will be opportunities for the public to comment throughout our budget process with the budget work sessions during May, and then we will have two reading ordinances of all of the implementing legislation, so many, many opportunities for the public to We'll now move on to our regular meeting agenda, and we have, I believe, six different ordinances and resolutions to discuss individually, and then a consent agenda with nine items on it. So we'll get started with the first of the regular ones. The first one is the Second Reading Ordinance authorizing installation of speed humps in 7600 Block of Hammond Avenue. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Barry, second, and by Councilmember Wright. Is there any council discussion on this? We've had a work session on it and a first reading. Any public comment? Okay, will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Okay, that ordinance passes. The next item is Second Reading Ordinance authorizing installation of speed humps in the 1100 Block of Merwood Drive. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Again, moved by Councilmember Barry, second, and by Councilmember Wright. Any council comment? Any public comment? Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Okay, that ordinance passes the second reading, so there will be more speed humps in the city. Before going to the next item, let me just comment that I had a question for the city clerk about whether we needed to convene as the stormwater board to pass an ordinance amending the code for the stormwater management program, and the advice was that, no, we do not need to do that. We only need to convince, convene as the stormwater board if we're passing the budget, the stormwater budget, or if we are, there was one other thing?
Amending the budget.
Amending the budget. So it's all budget-driven. The council does the code as the council. So we will consider Second Reading Ordinance amending the code of stormwater management to require all commercial, industrial, and institutional development activity to comply with the code and correct the admission of permit fees for multifamily, commercial, industrial, and institutional development. Would somebody like to move that?
I'd like to move that.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second, and by Councilmember Wright. Is there any council discussion? Any public discussion? A clerk please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. The next item is Single Reading Ordinance awarding contract for Jackson Boyd Playground renovation. Somebody like to move that?
So moved.
And you're the second, because you spoke. So it was moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. Any council comments or questions on this one?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Snapper.
I noticed that an option was considered to remove the small boulders, save a little money that way. I happen to have a personal irritation with small boulders, so I'd love to see them removed. Save a little money.
Well, I could describe a little bit more about what, yeah, what purpose they serve. The site has been a challenging site to develop and make ADA compliant, so we're having to drop the level on the uphill side and kind of raise the level on the downhill side. There's also significant oak trees along the fence line in particular, so when you change grade, you have to be particularly careful about soil issues around the trees. So the stones were seen, or the boulders, and we're talking about probably a stone foot to two-foot high, three-foot, you know, or two to three-foot wide. So they would be large enough to climb on, sit on, and the purpose was to create sort of a border between the grade changes. We'd be using a technique called air spading, where you actually blow out the dirt, find the roots, and then set the stones in the area that is not going to affect the tree root system, but will maintain the grade. That's the sort of structural intention of the boulder, and there's two places where that was going to be occurring. The other intention of the boulder was to add, I'll call it a play feature, but that's not really the true meaning of the design. It was to add a feature for the older kids in the neighborhood as kind of a place where they would congregate, convene to, kind of be an interesting place to sort of hang out as preteens and teenagers are wont to do, because we did have one of the meetings in the neighborhood where the issue of sort of who comes to the park and who's the park for was raised, and they were asking about skate ramps and, you know, things like that that couldn't fit on the site. So it was a way to try to address a spoken need from the community about sort of having a place for preteens or teens where really what they want to do is kind of hang out, but to be in a place where it's visible, non-destructive, and kind of meets the needs of the site. So those were sort of the dual roles of the boulders. And I, that's pretty much all I can say about that. If we don't do the boulders, we'll need to do something relative to the grade change, but there's, you know, there's some finessing that we can do with it in design itself.
You convince me.
Okay.
And this is a not-to-exceed contract, so it sounds like pieces can be mixed and matched a little bit depending on how the project goes?
Yeah, we've had a meeting last week with the low bidder and the landscape design folks, and they basically sort of put their heads together to try to find ways that the contractor might be unable to suggest, and the landscape architect folks were able to hear about alterations they might make. So I think we'll actually be able to reduce the budget by some amount more than that. We're coming up with some slight changes to the grade issue that will reduce the feat of retaining wall, for instance, that we're going to need on the site. So I'm hoping that the 135 will actually be more than, more than is needed. I know we've got a firm commitment on a reduction of almost $8,000 from their bid price based on changes to the type of railing that's put on the retaining wall. Anytime you have a retaining wall over three feet, you have to have a railing on it. So we expect out a fairly sturdy iron railing, two-foot square, and they were showing us design options of aluminum railings that were less costly, structurally sound enough, but could reduce the cost. So that chopped off several thousand dollars of cost. And then the option of us purchasing the playground equipment ourselves, which we've done before in other parks as a way to try to reduce costs. It just eliminates the tax and the markup fee that's, you know, comes with the contractor making the purchase. If we do it ourselves and coordinate with them, then it saves a couple of thousand dollars to do it that way. So those are the known items, but I'm anticipating that we'll be able to tweak it a bit more and bring it down a few more thousand.
And we've had success with that method of us doing it, and the, I know, I know from the other side of the fence, the reason that when I give, my customers, if they want the option where they purchase some materials, I point out that, yes, there's no markup, but the markup covers certain things, including if there are difficulties dealing with it as part of the cost of dealing with it. And so it offloads, it gives us the potential to save, it also gives us the potential to lose it all back again.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have cost worry. We just have sort of a staff time and impact worrying, because you're right, as soon as you take it on, you're taking on all that that means, which is when we get to delivery, we have to go piece by piece through it, confirm that everything's there, and not let the, you know, delivery truck leave until we've confirmed it. We have to store it in such a way that it doesn't get damaged if we're transporting it out to the site. We have to, again, make sure that we're, you know, and all those things are the contractor's responsibility when they purchase it. So it comes with its, it comes with its impacts.
We'll call it costs, not as hard costs, but there are definite costs.
Now, we did it before at Hefner, and we did it before when we did Totally Fraser. So we sort of worked it out internally, and we've, you know, had our trials by fire with those two. This is a much simpler set of equipment, so I'm really not too worried about our ability to manage it. The equipment we had at Hefner far exceeds what we're going to be putting in here just because of the footprint of the park itself.
Okay, good. Are there other questions? Is there any public comment? All right. I guess clerk can call a roll on the Single Reading Ordinance.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The next item is Single Reading Ordinance awarding contract for replacement of broken storm drain line on Columbia Avenue. Can I just?
Sure. This situation is actually one that we've identified over a year ago, so it's not a newly occurring or a problem that we just were made aware of. There's a situation at the inlet at Poplar and Columbia where, at some point in the past, on the maps, there's a 15-inch pipe that's shown as being in that location. At some point, 20 or plus more years ago, those pipe, there was a problem with that pipe, and the pipe was replaced, and two 8-inch pipes were actually put in there, which isn't the best of, you know, for conveyance, you'd rather have the large pipe. But in the meantime, those pipes have been collapsed due to, hard to say what, but they've broken and collapsed from the inlet itself. So we've been made aware of it. We still have flow through this pipe, so it's not really a situation where water's been backing up, or the road's been sinking, or anything like that. It was a known defect in the system and one that we scheduled to do this year. So now it's just a matter of excavating that area and replacing the pipes in that area. And we'll be putting back in a single 16-inch pipe. It's particularly important in that site because this pipe itself is going to be carrying all the stormwater flow from Carroll Avenue and the fire station development. They do have a stormwater retention facility on their lot, but, you know, it's a critical concern to the county that we have these, this section of the infrastructure working well and ready to handle everything that's going to be coming its way. The pipes themselves on Poplar Avenue are very large, 32 to 48-inch pipes that go under the sidewalks.
So this is just one of a number of inlets?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens?
And you said this was planned, so this is in our budget position?
Oh, yes, yes. It's, the stormwater has both a capital and a subcontractor line. The subcontractor line is what we use for repairs, and now we're aware of several defects in the system, and we schedule them. We already know what we're planning to do next year once the budget's passed. One of the benefits of our TV inspection program is it kind of lets us see ahead into the future and then schedule as we can those things that either are immediate or can be waited on a year or two to be worked on.
And I noted that, I'm not quite sure when it happened, but I noted this weekend that the county project started with the fire station, that the house next to the fire station has now been knocked down. So stormwater patterns may be changing there already.
Yeah, yeah. They'll be significantly changing the grade in the back lot as part of the project, raising it up, so it'll change and then change again pretty significantly.
Any other council questions? Somebody like to move the ordinance?
I'll move it.
Second? Somebody? Moved by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any public comment on this ordinance? Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. The next item is a resolution authorizing a member of Henland in agreement with Old Tacoma Business Association. Just so I don't forget, would somebody like to move that?
Move it.
And second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. I believe that the, oh, I'm not going to get this term right, the executive director is here, and Sarah Gaines is here. You want to answer things or tell us anything? You want to answer things or tell us anything more?
I'll tell you very little and then answer any questions you have. Basically, following the last work session of the city council, staff went back and drafted a memorandum of understanding or an agreement regarding the continued operation of the Old Tacoma Business Association to provide them operating subsidy in the amount of $25,000 for its Main Street initiative. There was some discussion regarding the amount of these subsidy and the number of years that a commitment could be made on the part of the city council. What we have drafted is a one-year agreement that has the option of renewing for two additional 12-month periods at a $25,000 level with the renewal of the agreement contingent upon consensus of both parties to renew it as well as the availability of funding in the budget. The balance of the agreement reflects all of the conditions that we'd outlined for you at the last session.
And this was an attempt to find the middle ground between the various opinions expressed by the council last week? Questions, Councilmember Snicker?
Yes, I looked through my notes. I don't know if I would have put it as threading between the two, because I thought there was considerable support for just a one-year, 25, but this is a sort of optional each of the following two years. So that is, I suppose, a middle ground. I think I, unfortunately, Colleen isn't here, to speak for this, would have supported either no funding or reduced funding in the out years. Similar to the other ones that we've done, you have a thing that is getting going and as it gets going, it finds support elsewhere.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Seaman?
I was recalling also that there was some interest in maybe decreasing or not having the additional funding in the out years. I know that my proposal had been to go with the higher amount for this coming year and then decreasing it gradually for the following two years so that it was kind of a weaning off of the support for the Main Street program as they find revenue sources in other locations. So I would like to move this with $25,000 for the current year, 15 for the second year, and 10 for the third.
And that would be an amendment? Because it's been moved, right?
No.
Hasn't been moved?
Yep.
Did they not move?
They moved the person before.
I moved him.
Yeah, that's what I called it.
Then I would like to offer that as amendment.
Okay, discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Wright?
First, I have a question, and Roz might be able to answer this. Is there some component to Main Street which requires the local municipality to contribute or strongly encourages the local municipality to contribute for, to continue that designation and get support?
The National Main Street Center, which is part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, has reconsidered the way they set that up originally. I shouldn't say originally. In the last 10 years, they've asked municipalities to commit to something like a three-year or five-year startup period. They have since come back and said what they've discovered is that Main Streets end up dying because they get started, but they don't get their feet solidly enough on the ground to keep going. And so they've been in the process of revising that recommendation that they think that's not adequate, but in fact, it needs some kind of ongoing partnership and investment from the city as well as other public sources. They put a lot of emphasis on public-private partnerships.
And just to clarify, when the city partnered with the Old Tacoma Business Association to submit an application for the Main Street program to the state of Maryland, that was one of the conditions, was that there was a three-year commitment to provide some operating subsidy. And at that point in time, it was $25,000 for each of three years.
But that, the original three years has passed.
The original three years has passed. The commitment was provided for a fourth year, which is the year that we're in now, and the request is to extend it.
I may say something just in clarification. We have sought and successfully received outside funding in a number of ways, not the least of which is something like $305,000 that I've brought in in my 20 months on the job. The grant money I've brought in from the state of Maryland comes through us. It has this fabulous ripple effect of facade improvement money and the new revolving loan money. We do not get any operational funds from it. In fact, we are required to contribute 10%, which is an in-kind contribution of my time to those grants. So it's very well-spent, high-impact money, but it doesn't run an organization, it doesn't pay rent or salary or any of the nuts and bolts that it takes to make those things actually work. What it does do is give Historic Tacoma $20,000 to do their windows, which we've done. And, you know, when the shampoo window was shattered because a kid was jumping on the bench and went through it, we got that through quickly and repaired. And it's done some great work in historic preservation in the town. The revolving loan is new, and so that's just getting up and started. That's one of our big initiatives for 2008 is business retention and recruitment. And so there's a lot of energy going into doing the research, getting the materials ready, going out there and filling those vacancies so that Old Tacoma does look like it's thriving because it's a slow incremental kind of organic bubbling of process.
Councilmember Robinson?
I was hoping that we would see a business plan. I was happy to see a business plan presented by the New Hampshire Avenue Farmers Market, which showed a progression. I wouldn't necessarily assume that the business plan from OTBA would show a weaning off of our support, although that's what the New Hampshire Avenue Farmers Market showed. But they showed how they were going to grow and thrive and stay as a nonprofit but have replaced certain revenue streams with other revenue streams. And I would like to have seen that. There are two other things that I think we have to keep in mind with OTBA. One is that Main Street's unique in some ways. There's only one Old Town area that we have. But what we spend money on, well, I'm not sure we're all in agreement on what we're spending money on, other than to provide for the health of Old Tacoma. But I'd like to feel that what we're spending money on is a kind of a laboratory or a workshop or something that we invest in that can then be used in other parts of the city, whether it's how we organize our businesses or how they provide outreach or how they bolster what we've got in that area. So I would also, in the business plan, my mythical business plan and my wish we had one business plan, I would have liked to have seen that, how what you're doing could be replicated in other parts of the city. And finally, I take our carbon footprint very seriously and I would like to have seen in my mythical one, I had, wish I had, I wish I could have seen a business plan, a way that you could show us how you're leading the way in reducing carbon footprint for our commercial entities in Tacoma Park. So I'm willing to, even though I've been involved in the Main Street program and have been on the board of OTBA, and I have some reservations about voting one way or the other because of that experience, Terry convinced me last week that, and I'm not making anything personally from it, so it's not a conflict of interest in any way, and I will vote for this $25,000 for one year, although I know we're in discussion about Terry's amendments. But next year, if you come back, I would very much recommend that you bring back a business plan that shows where you're headed and how your, where the money's coming from, how what you're doing builds capacity for us to use elsewhere in the city, and how you're reducing the carbon footprint for the businesses in Old Tacoma that we can, again, use to spur other businesses in our town to reduce their carbon footprint.
I apologize that if we, since you were here, you know, before us not too long ago, if we had hoped for a business plan, I wish that we would have asked for it with those specifics so that you could have prepared it by, sorry about that. I would like to say that I think, specifically about the amendment, I think that we have to view this as something different than something we just get up started and then we no longer fund. Because what I think we're doing here is ongoing economic development, and that costs money to some degree. And we're choosing to do that through a nonprofit organization that looks at economic development in a certain area of the city as opposed through staff resources, although the staff do add and contribute and, city staff add and contribute and help in the thought process there. And I do think this is a model that can be replicated elsewhere. I know Ruben is interested in economic development in areas within his ward, and I think places where we can involve the business community in setting that agenda and having them volunteer and contribute money also, as OTBA does, probably a good model. It's starting to work in Old Town. Irwin's been doing it at the crossroads. I know we don't subsidize Irwin in an ongoing way that I know of, but I wouldn't be opposed to that if we thought that there were very specific programs and efforts that would continue to bolster the area and improve it. So I don't think it's such a good idea. I wouldn't vote for this amendment to automatically decrease in future years. Instead, I would say, let's decide on some amount for this year and see where things are at and have a discussion with OTBA again next year if not. See where they are, what progress they've made, what funds they've, matching funds they've gotten from DC, see how the loan program is going, what are the, we don't even know what the costs, administrative costs are going to be with the loan program yet. So it feels a little bit jumping the gun to already decide we're going to diminish what we give them. Right after that.
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you. I could support Councilmember Wright's suggestion if I understand it right, which is to approve the $25,000 this year and drop any amounts for the future years and just make that optional.
I think that's, based on what I'm hearing from my council, fellow council members, that's probably what would be supported. Originally, I was thinking that I would come in here and say, let's do a compromise. Instead of having some potential guarantee, let's agree on a $30,000 for one year because there are some specific things that they're doing this year, the loan program, there's the $30,000 for market study, and before they even get to that, they have to do a mapping project, which I think costs $1,500 or something like that. But...
If you offer that as an amendment, I will second.
I would offer a one-time $30,000 payment with no ongoing commitments at this point.
The second, then?
So that's a substitute amendment?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
Robert, who was on that one? Leave that up to you and Robert.
Why don't you, I don't know.
I draw my earlier amendment.
And is that okay with the second or to the amendment?
I don't think anyone ever...
I mean, I said a second was spoken, it was seconded.
Okay.
So now you have an amendment which is a one-time $30,000?
Yes.
With no provision for a revisit?
With no commitment?
No commitment. That, OTBA can act like they did this year and have a discussion with us next year, but there's no written commitment in that.
So it's just a one-year?
Right.
Not the one-year with the two-year provision as drafted?
Correct.
Okay, I'll, just since I haven't spoken, I'll speak to that amendment and say that I was ready last week to support $25,000 for each of three years. That's where I was last week. I'm ready to support whatever we can do tonight that will give Main Street ongoing support. I think it's vital that we do it. Economic development is crucial, particularly in Old Town. It's crucial in the whole city. I think it's more so in Old Town. There are other issues there in terms of coordination with the district and it's our Main Street. And I would say that if there's any commercial area in town that has more people with more ideas and more opinions about what should and should not happen there, this is the area. And so it may not be as easy as in some other areas that don't necessarily get the same kind of support to just go ahead and have property owners attract businesses based on what they think would fit. There's an awful lot of people looking over people's shoulders in this area. And so I think it's partly our responsibility to try and help manage that input and come up with a solution. So putting our money into it can help make that possible. So I'll probably vote against the amendment just because I'd rather, I would rather see a commitment to some ongoing support for three years rather than one. Any other comments?
I would support the one-year even with the increased amount, although it'd be nice to hear from Bob to make sure we have $5,000 to do it. But I assume we could find $5,000 for this because I just, as was articulated earlier, I think there are other areas of the city that need economic development and it would then be five years of substantial support to Old Town. Might be time to turn to other parts of the city. But yes, I would support the amendment.
Okay, any other comments on the amendment? Any public comments? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment stated by Councilmember Wright, which is $30,000 for this year with no ongoing commitment? All those, raise a hand if you're in favor. All those opposed? Five for, one against. Okay, so now the resolution as amended would go forward. Do we have any problem with how the language is going to read in this?
Essentially, if I understand what was just acted upon, the reference to $25,000 in the resolution would be deleted and $30,000 would be substituted, and then the second, now therefore, would be deleted in its entirety.
Any further comments on the resolution as amended? Any public comments? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
One opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now are at the consent agenda, which has nine items on it. Is everybody happy with the consent agenda as constituted? Anybody need to pull anything off and discuss anything? Okay, there will be no council comment, there will be no public comment. Just can we make sure that nothing here needs a, no, it's all resolutions, so all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You need something? Should we move it?
Who made the motion?
Yeah, who moved the consent agenda?
I didn't get that part.
Okay, Councilmembers, Seaman's moved it and it was seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Now will we vote again? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, we will now take a short break and come back for our work session item and then our closed session. session. Come back for our final work session item.
What would that be about?
I think we could just skip it. But I feel first, maybe Steve Davies came and wanted to have a quick, three-minute comment. He was a little late, about an hour for a public comment, but we're flexible. So Steve, if you want to make some quick comments.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Davies. I live at 6717 Palmer Avenue in the Circle Woods neighborhood. I just wanted to first start off on the subject of Echo Park. It wasn't clear to me whether you know that that project is not going to be built. I know this because my mother and I both put money down on units in that building, and we have had our money reimbursed to us, and we're told that the project is not going forward because, you know, they didn't sell enough units, I guess they couldn't get the financing. It's somewhat vague, but my guess is it just was not viable, and it ain't happening.
Except they are entertaining offers to sell the project in a pretty close-
Oh, really?
They were pretty close, and I think that deal fell through very recently.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's still possible to get built because it's approved for a certain period of time.
Right. Okay. The folks who were doing it are not doing it. They've returned the money. So on the subject of the EYA development and the sale of the land, at Metro, I want to strongly object to the use of public funds to mount a legal challenge to Womata's decision to sell the land. As expressed at the recent community meeting, a number of people seem to believe that Womata promised to preserve the green space at the Metro. Womata denies that, and as Mayor Williams noted at the meeting, nothing exists on paper. A lawsuit based on the notes of late Mayor Sam Abbott or on decades-old oral commitments is, I believe, doomed to fail. As financially and environmentally misguided as the development appears to be, I believe the city's best option is to remain active in the ongoing process to ensure access, well, to ensure pedestrian safety and any type of safety, and ease of access for physically challenged riders. There's nothing stopping historic Tacoma or any other person from bringing a lawsuit, but I personally don't want my tax money used for a legal fishing expedition. My last comment would just be, with Lester Brown coming to talk, perhaps, I'm not going to be there, if somebody wants to ask him whether the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in Tacoma Park is a sustainable practice, I'd love to hear his answer. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thanks. And now we will go to the report from the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. And Jay Levy is chair of the committee, and another member of the committee is here as well. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. And however you want to do this, Jay, you can talk from there, you can both come up to the table and talk, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, what's the point of talking behind this microphone? I hate microphones.
But they're necessary.
They aren't necessary at times. Abraham Lincoln didn't have one when he gave his gift to the president.
Yeah, but he didn't have folks at home. And look what happened to him.
That's right. As most of you know, my name is Jay Levy, and I live at 7431 Baltimore Avenue. I've been chair of the Nuclear Free Zone Committee since 1998, and Julie Bobby has been on the committee since-
Well, I don't know, five or six or seven or eight years.
Something like that. I'm just going to give a brief report on our activities to date and our plans for the future, so leaving a little time for you to ask questions. But I note that Councilman Sniffer has been on the committee. I can't recall the years, but we miss you.
Like eighty-five to the mid-nineties.
Right, 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 right.
And I don't think I was a member, but I think I was a council liaison.
You were a council liaison, yeah, for, right, right. And I want to bring that point up a little later, but basically, besides carrying out our routine tasks of supporting the council in any given instance where a purchase has to be made outside of the Nuclear Free Zone, otherwise a waiver might be granted, we've had a couple of those instances. We haven't had much, how should I put it? We haven't had many instances where there has been a need to waive, which has been very good, because we've had almost 25 years of the ordinance, and so we've cooperated with the council in that respect. Besides that, we've carried out our mandate to engage the community in public education. In continuing this effort, we've had public forums in this chamber, we've sponsored cable TV presentations, we've organized educational exhibits in City Hall, we have participated in the street music festivals, and through the kindness of the local peace committee, we have spread Tacoma Park's Nuclear Free Zone message. Oh, yes. And these are available only through the committee, for the only source. And the committee has also, through years, fielded many requests from other communities, and has resulted in at least, I know, two instances where other cities in the United States, the capital of Washington, state of Washington, Olympia, Arcata, California, and probably others that have passed burdens of similar to ours, we've cooperated with them to help them get started. And assuming the chair, I personally have represented Tacoma Park in Japan at the World Conference of Mayors for Peace. Japan was chosen because it was the observance of the Nagasaki-Hiroshima atomic bombings. I've also represented the city at the World Peace Forum, which was held in Vancouver, Canada in 2005. I've been to New York, representing us at, again, the Mayors for Peace. They had a convocation. This was in 2006. It was part of the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty Review that the United Nations was having, World Conference for Mayors. We're a member of that, and I sort of represent the city. All this I've done on my own. All of this I've done on my own expense. The city hasn't contributed to any of my travels or anything like that. And there wasn't criticism of our representation, because I think some of the citizens thought that it was being funded with public funds, but it's not true. I also testified recently before the District of Columbia's Public Safety Committee. One of the activities we're currently following is monitoring what's been a challenge. District of Columbia passed a law outlawing hazardous chemical transport. The CSX and other rail interests promptly challenged in federal court, saying that District of Columbia had no right to do this. At the public hearing for the ordinance, I testified, saying, as a member of the, well, as chair of the Nuclear Free Zone, we were very interested in seeing this kind of an ordinance, which could eventually, perhaps, give us a feel for how we could deal with transport of high-level nuclear waste. The high-level nuclear waste problem was presented to the, from the council to us two years ago, when you gave us the additional responsibility of monitoring high-level nuclear waste transport, making recommendations to you about what would happen if high-level nuclear waste came through. We are monitoring the court decision. It's now, it's been challenged about a year, and has been no result. The federal district court has not made a decision yet. I can tell you that at present, there's very little high-level nuclear waste now going through Tacoma Park on the CSX line that we know about, because the high-level waste from the nuclear plants, the North Anna in Virginia, and Calvert Cliffs in Maryland, that high-level waste is now stored on the grounds. It's not being transported, because there's no place to transport it to at present. The government, federal government, wanted to do it at Buca Flats in Nevada. That's been put on hold, so for the time being, there is no nuclear waste being transported as far as we know. Moving on, we're in the process of developing a blog, so that people both in Tacoma Park and around the country can come to it and see the latest developments in our efforts for a non-nuclear world. This will be an educational tool, and at present, we're not thinking about yet opening it up to public comment, who's a blog that members of the committee, as well as you, could put on items of interest as far as nuclear nonproliferation. So we hope to have that up and running in the next month or two. At present, we're also working on a commemorative event for the 25th anniversary of the Nuclear Free Zone Ordinance. That will fall December 8th, I believe. It was 1983 when the council unanimously passed the ordinance, which has been amended once to allow for a waiver, but the original ordinance was December of eighty-three. And we're hoping to have an event here in the chambers with a keynote speaker, perhaps a film, musical event. We're going to ask the city council and the county council to pass a resolution recognizing twenty-five years. And maybe we'll even try something at the state level. We're just planning it right now. I should note, the committee is operating at present and has been for the last two years with only five members. We have been able to fill the two vacant seats for a while. So if anybody is listening or is interested, they can contact me. And I'm on the city's website, my email, and I think my phone number is on the city's website under committees. And we'd really like to have more support, because we can do more with more bodies. And with that, I guess I'll leave it open. If you have anything to add.
Just if I can just follow for a second, Jay, on the membership of the committee, the piece that we have on the packet for this has four members and three vacancies.
Okay. Okay, we have one member, I think. Are you the member that is going to be re-upped?
We're all up. That's what Jessie said.
I'm not sure of the status of...
I lost track of Julie.
Okay, okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure that...
Sure. We have five, and we've been operating with five. It's a little difficult to get a lot of, you know, activity going, and even sometimes to hold a meeting with a quorum. But we're doing our best and hoping to get more and more members. I don't know the reason why the vacancies have remained as such. Maybe it's just too old a thing. Everybody assumes, oh, you know, that's like...
I thought the Washington Post was recruiting for you.
How is the Washington Post recruiting for us?
Every time they bring up Tacoma Park, they talk about Nuclear Free Zone.
We are known all over. We always go around and say, oh, Nuclear Free Tacoma Park. I wanted to add that we really came up in a very vibrant international movement, that that preceded it, that's ongoing still, that we renewed our commitment to the recent arrivals in Tacoma Park that are among us, and to greater community involvement. And we've recently started Nuclear Free Chocolate. This is new joke, Jay. It was in the works. Nuclear Free Chocolate, which is chocolate ice cream made by Summer Delights with cinnamon hearts, and perhaps our commemorative event will feature an ice cream social as well. We'd really like to celebrate the positive aspects of being who we are, Nuclear Free in Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I wonder if you had given any thought to trying to add a little more excitement with a new issue to the committee, to, in a way, to not only advance the Tacoma Park interests in limiting nuclear activity, but also in the interests of maybe attracting new members? I'm thinking about some type of work, maybe around the use of the radiological weapons in Iraq, things like that.
Well, there is, there is an effort at present to focus on the weaponization, nuclear weaponization of space, which we all live in. The other possible issue focus might be nuclear power, because the ordinance does not deal at all with nuclear power. It deals with nuclear weapons, no research allowed in the city. It deals with no investment by the city, no contract work by the city, any entity that is involved in the production of nuclear weapons. And now you've added, two years ago, high-level nuclear waste. So the next step, if there is to be one, I would think would be in one of these two areas. And of course, nuclear power, I'm not sure. I think Pepco, basically a coal-fired generator utility. But that's a possibility, depending on what the council would see fit to give us as a mandate. So we can examine that more thoroughly.
And certainly transportation of nuclear materials is a subject that can be elaborated on. We have maps that show us where and when in the city that it comes to. That's a matter of direct public concern.
Yeah, I saw an interesting show on KGO TV discussing the whole issue, and with animations and everything. It was interesting. I don't know if you've seen it, but it, I think it would be of value in talking with the public, to be able to show that clip.
Very valuable, very good for the commemorative. And we'd like our blog to be able to link to things like that.
Yeah, Blogmaster's not here, but we're just developing this now, so we'll give you further report when it's up and operating.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank you for, Jay in particular, for your tireless and long advocacy on this issue. You were there at the beginning, continued all through those years, and your wife as well. Sharon was on the committee when I was on the committee. It was really a delight. I have a, and it was my first introduction to a citizens committee that actually had something happen in my activist life. I had been on many committees in which I lobbied, wrote letters, you know, marched in demonstrations, and didn't seem to have much impact. It was really nice to come to the city council and say, we would like the city council to do X, and the council said, yes. It was always shocking when that would happen. And there were a lot of good things that came out of the Nuclear Free Zone. It's not well-known that we worked on the procurement regulations for the city. This is many years ago, Barb. And discovered that the procurement regulations were, in fact, kind of not very well organized. And as part of inserting the certification about Nuclear Free, we revised, got a nice revision on the procurement regulations in the city. There were several other things like that that came out of it, some stuff on Public Works, and anyway, I remember that. I do have a couple specific questions. One, are we still doing Nuclear Free Mulch? I always loved that.
Mulch? Nuclear Free Mulch?
We used to bag the mulch and sell it.
I think that's still, I've seen, I've seen the signs somewhere. But that's not basically, yes, that's basically Public Works.
Public Works, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's still, that was a great gimmick when it was introduced about, what, six years ago, five years ago?
Oh, longer than that.
Longer than that. Not in my time.
No, way longer than that, in fact.
Wow, how did that happen?
It was very, what we did was very clever. I don't know who thought this up, but they created a little tiny plastic bag, very small, with a sticker that said Nuclear Free Mulch on it. And they sent it, they got a mailing list of, I'll just call it liberals, around Southern Montgomery. I don't know exactly what the list was, but they sent it to all these folks, and it resulted in a huge ordering of bags of Nuclear Free Mulch around the city. And of course, we have a lot of mulch, and it's, some years it's hard to get rid of, actually, all of it. People are very good about mulching their leaves and so on.
How did they send it out? How did they, how was that created?
We bought a bagging machine. I don't know if it's still around, a bagging machine to create these bags, and then the bags were sold and, you know, mailed. It was either you could pick it up, or you could have it mailed to you. I think it was like thirty-five bucks. Yeah, delivered, something like that.
And the city works it handled that?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It'd be fun to look into it, because it had a cute little, you know, Nuclear Free Mulch.
And mulch now, more than ever.
Now, yeah, exactly. The other is, a question more for Barb. Does the city still use the Nuclear Free logo on our mail? We used to have a, you know, postal sticker, I remember.
Installation, yeah.
I don't think I've ever seen it.
Ah.
Looking at the city clerk to see if it rings a bell with her.
I think, I recall a time when I first started here, which was about seven years ago, I remember seeing that. I don't know where it went, why.
All city mail went out, and it had, you know, next to the postal meter thing, and a little, the logo, Nuclear Free.
If I have a piece that comes out, I'll get it to you on that.
It's just fun. I love the T-shirts, you know.
Can you hold the T-shirt up to your left, so the camera can see it?
To my left?
See, there's the camera on the ceiling.
The camera's over there.
Yeah, camera's over there.
Well, might be this one.
And they come in large, extra-large, and a couple of mediums. We had some for children, I think they sold out, so...
And where are you, how do we get one if we wanted one? Or how would anyone get one if they wanted one?
Well, we have an agreement with the peace committee, and actually, these are at my house, so you can just call me. Yeah.
And how much on it?
Ten dollars. And we sell them only at Tacoma Park events, street festival, news festival, the folk festival, jazz festival, so...
I remember discussion at one of our meetings about the street signs saying Nuclear Free Tacoma Park. What happened on that?
Yeah, what happened to those little round, they were blue, cute little logo, they were...
One of them is up on Piney Branch, as you cross into Tacoma Park from DC. There was one at the corner of Carroll Avenue and Eastern that's been ripped off in the front of the church, with the church triangle, the triangular point that points into the district.
There used to be one in front of Montgomery College, or whatever.
Yes.
Oh, what a good place.
I think we, I think I have one, and I think we should consider, there was a big controversy over signs these days, that to make a few of those wouldn't be that costly. Certainly not fifty-six thousand dollars. If you would like, I can get one to, if I give it to Public Works, or, I think I've got one in there. And who would designate where they would go? What's the, we have several gateways.
We have staff who deals with that.
Yeah, thank you. We have to appoint a citizens committee.
Whatever it takes.
Since we went through a long process with gateway signs that has just been going up, they would know where it might work and where it wouldn't.
Okay, so who would be contacted personally for that?
Sarah Danes is going to be there.
Yeah.
And I do have one request. I think it'd be helpful if we did have a designated representative from the council to liaise when necessary. So if, that could be worked out, that would be good.
I would nominate Ruben, given his long history. I can see that one coming.
Sorry, Ruben.
Sure.
We'll pay you a dollar a year.
Give you a T-shirt. I like, I use those T-shirts when I, you know, run or bike or something like that. It's cool.
We'll give you a medium.
Oh, cool.
We give them out to visiting dignitaries. I think Kathy Porter asked for one or two. There were some foreign dignitaries. I can't remember, it's a while ago. So, I mean, for that, you know, we just give them out. You guys may have to pay them, sorry. You're not dignitaries, you gotta follow. If the Pope comes here, he'll give them one.
No, no.
They were from Iran, weren't they?
I can't remember.
I think that guy you just mentioned doesn't wear black.
Oh, yeah.
Since they had to get rid of the bobbleheads.
Now, we would seriously to make them more broadly available. That's a thought, too. And sell them, for instance, at Tacoma Crossroads, or...
Well, that'd be up to the committee, I mean, you know...
That's why I'm bringing it up right now.
But you have a, you have a blog now.
We will, yeah.
Have you given any consideration to a website?
What's the difference?
The blog is more for a discussion.
Okay.
Where a website might offer, for example, documents related to the Nuclear Free Ordinance here in Tacoma Park, and also might offer for sale the T-shirts that would be available anywhere in the world.
Can we link to the...
We do have the language of the ordinance, if you go to cityoftacoma.com, whatever, I mean, you can get right now the language of the ordinance, which is good. But we certainly, if we can get some web match, or design something, it might be possible to do that and just get bigger.
What we don't have is the Nuclear Free Zone list of companies, and that would be helpful for citizens who wanted to...
Well, that's proprietary, I think.
It is proprietary.
I'm not sure how that...
And we'd have to figure out how to do that.
Because it's sold to, sold to specific...
Yeah, we have to buy our listing. I forgot how often we buy it. There's a rule about it.
But can we put the most recent copy in the public library or something?
No, that's what we were thinking, is that it's proprietary, and you may not be able to do it.
And we can't do that.
I don't know.
Can we put the next most recent...
I'm trying to call Ferguson, I haven't, I mean, trying to email, I haven't gotten an answer yet, but as you discussed, I'm trying to reach the person, apparently it's a one-man show, one-person show, who compiles the list of nuclear-related industries. And he does it every, I believe, every two or three years?
It's been a couple years.
Been a couple, yeah.
The ordinance, I believe, calls for an annual adoption, but we have a difficult time getting a newer list. We're working with a list that's several years old. It's, I think, fiscal year 2002.
I'm not sure what it was. I'm not sure what the name is.
Federal information.
It is hard to get because the, uh, defense, I know the Defense Department, um, changed its rules about, um, making contracts, particularly after the Iraq war, 'cause they didn't want folks to know how much we were spending and who was getting all that money.
A lot of the contracts are DOE, but half of the DOE budget is classified. We're working on nuclear.
Right.
The list is public, by the way, the list is, it's public information, we don't publish the list. So, uh, so when, when it was adopted, we put a copy in the library, of course, it went to the council, the committee distributed and recommended, the, the council adopted. And, uh, so it is, it's public information, it's just not, we don't publish it, put it out.
Can we change that and put it out? It seems like a good thing to be in public knowledge. Or can we put it on our, our website or blog, is the case maybe?
Is our person who does the publishing...
It's, I, I don't, I don't think we could do that. As, as Jay said, uh, they, the person who does it compiles the list and sells the list. So if we were to buy the list and publish it, then...
But if it's public information, I, I'm, I'm a little unclear here. If it's public information and yet proprietary information, does the proprietary supersede public information, you say?
There's a difference between something being public information and publishing it. So we buy books and put the copies of the books in the library, but if we took Grissom's latest book and then we published it to the web for people to read for free, we'd probably get, we'd be in violation of copyright. So there is a difference between publishing and, and something being public information.
And how does that relate to putting it in the library and just making it more popular and available that way?
Well, you, you purchased a copy of that list and so you put it in the library, someone could come in and look at it.
Yeah.
It's different than saying you're gonna public, actively publish that so that many people could have it for free.
So we could do it in a library, but not in the web?
Right, yeah, right.
Okay, great.
I have, um, one, if we're doing brainstorming on marketing and so forth, kinda go back to that for a minute. I'm always looking for ways to encourage people to reduce our carbon footprint. You might hear me say this over and over and over again. Think about bags, shopping bags, which are a replacement for plastic bags that people use.
We did think about that with a logo on it?
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking about your logo, or, or cups to replace these things. Or, um, any, anything that's out there as a way to, to, um, save energy or reduce the carbon footprint, you might get some real traction on it.
It's a lovely idea.
We did, we did think, and, and we thought about caps and different ways to get out our message, so...
Cause it is, it's, I mean, the dove and the, it's a, it's an icon, iconic kind of, uh...
Yeah, it's a nice...
Symbol at this point in our, in our town, so...
It's a nice logo.
And, uh, what, I mean, the worst thing that could happen is you'd raise a couple hundred thousand dollars and then I don't, you know, you'd have to think about what to do with that, so...
Can I just make a comment that, just thinking about reducing the carbon footprint, one possible way to reduce the carbon foot, footprint is to use nuclear energy.
It's kind of false because...
That's debatable.
It, it's, yeah, it's, it's pretty false. I mean, and, and the waste that we felt involved in nuclear energy and the transport of nuclear energy, crosses out any beneficial, any, any carbon ratios that that might have.
Well, the end product, uh, is phenomenal, it still hasn't been solved and it's actually making, uh, hundreds of dirty bomb targets available to anybody who, uh, so wishes. Yeah, I mean, everything's stored on site, but...
The, the, um, the dove indicates peace and that's as much what Tacoma Park likes to fly itself on as, as anything, so... And peace with the earth, I mean, you know, we can have this, we could have a long conversation about what peace with the earth means, but certainly, um, energy's a side of it.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my brainstormed idea for you.
Any, any other things that we need to cover? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And adjourned. Except we have to go into proposed closed session, we have to vote on that, so... Let that little knock back up off the table, and we're not adjourned yet. We'll, uh, need to vote to go into closed session, uh, to consult with legal counsel regarding Tacoma Metro Development pursuant to amputate code of mail, state government article ten-dash-five-zero-eight, A seven oh eight. Following that, we will adjourn for the evening. Who wants to, uh, move to the closed session? Led by Councilmember Siemens. Seconded by Councilmember Barry. All those in favor, please raise a hand. And any opposed, no, it carries unanimously, we are now adjourned.